I think we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you all very much for coming this evening. Good evening. My name is Greg Tremblay, and on behalf of the League of Women Voters, I would like to welcome you to this forum for the city council seats for the city of South Portland. The League of Women Voters is a grassroots, nonpartisan organization that seeks to promote voting rights and access and to improve awareness of and involvement in the democratic process. Thank you, all of you, for being here and being a part of that process. Do we have any currently serving elected officials who are with us this evening? Would you raise your hand? Would you stand for a moment? Your continuing service and your work for us all is part of what makes our country go and what makes our communities rich. Thank you for your continuing efforts. So a few brief housekeeping notes before we get started. One of them is, of course, please make note of where the exits are in the event that anything happens that you need to use them. Restrooms just outside this exit there. For everybody's sake, please make sure you silence your cell phones if you have not already done so. Yep, I don't know what I said that sounded like S-I-R-I or hey G-O-G-L-E, but something. Tonight's session will be recorded, but we will not be taking questions from the audience during this forum. We already have community-involved questions, so everything will be in the recording. But those of you who are in the audience don't have to worry about being on the recording tonight. If you need a listening aid, or you cannot see the screens, or there are any accessibility assistances that we can provide you, please do let us know. Raise your hand. You can let Jennifer Morris, who is the committee lead for the forums for South Portland, know, or one of our assistants can give you a hand. The IT guys are right around the corner, so please, we want you to be informed and involved. So if there's anything preventing that, let us know tonight so we can help you. The timeline of tonight's forum is quite tight out of respect for everybody's schedule, so we will have space for general applause at the end of the round of questions and the introductions of our unopposed candidates. So we're going to hold applause for things until we go through and we're at the very end. And please save your comments for discussions with the candidates in the offline portion when we're done with the formal part of the evening. The South Portland city elections are part of the general elections for the city council seats, which are held this November 7th. It will be selecting from opposed candidates for two of the four districts. We have District 1 candidates Linda Cohen and Brendan K. Williams with us tonight. We have District 2 candidates Rachel Coleman and Jeffrey McDonald with us tonight. And we have our two unopposed candidates as well, who will be joining us for some comments later in the evening. Stephen Riley for District 4 and Elise Tipton for District 5. Candidates, thank you for volunteering to serve your community, and thank you for joining us tonight and taking time to share your thoughts with us so that we know who you are and who we're voting for. The format of the forum tonight will be to allow for a short introductory statement by each of our candidates. They will be able to tell us a little bit about themselves and where they come from, followed by a series of moderated questions which the candidates will be responding to. The candidates have been informed as to what the general topics of the questions are, but the questions which have been formed with community involvement are new to the candidates this evening, so they will be answering them off the cuff. They will then have a short portion of time so that our unopposed candidates can give us their introductory statement. "The League of Women Voters is committed to the process of democracy, and as such, we will not endorse or support any specific candidate. Because of that, it's the League's policy not to extend an opportunity to fully participate in forum questions to candidates who are unopposed, because we, the people, only have one choice in that result." We have, in recognition of the willingness of Mr. Riley and Ms. Tipton to serve, invited them to make their statements so that we have a little bit of information about who they are. We do have some time limits to keep things rolling this evening. So the introductory statements will be a three-minute time limit, and I will then read questions for each of you to answer, which will be followed by an opportunity for you to take up to 90 seconds to answer those questions. We'll be rotating the order of responses throughout the evening, so please wait for me to call on you and give you the question before you respond. We will be repeating the question before each candidate so that the recording has an easy reference point for people watching later. You do not need to use your entire 90 seconds, but our timekeepers will keep you informed as to your timing. A yellow card will indicate that you have 30 seconds to finish. If you see a red card, please wrap up the sentence you are currently in the middle of and stop speaking. I would like to thank our timekeepers Patty Ventile and Penelope Hamblin for being here with us tonight and helping keep us on track. So some final forum guidelines. This is not a debate, it is a forum. As a result, please do not respond to each other within your answers or to make rebuttal comments about many, any of your opponent's answers, because there is no time for your opponent to respond to that rebuttal. Also, please do not respond to comments or questions from the audience, because we are keeping it just to the question responses tonight. Those are our really final guidelines. Candidates, do you have any questions about the format or operation tonight before we get started? Can everybody here okay so far? Okay, great. These mic systems are just, are best served if we project as though we're projecting to the room and aim at the microphone as best as you can. You will notice that if we start turning away, the microphone doesn't really get you as much, so deliver most of your information straight to the microphone, and we should be well set. Very good, we will begin. This is our introductory statement portion of the evening. We will begin with three-minute introductory statements, starting with Ms. Cohen. You were alphabetically at the top of the list.
Well, thank you to the League for sponsoring this event this evening, and thank you for everyone who is running this year and for stepping up. I want to start by saying I love this city. Nobody loves this city more than I do, maybe as much as I do, but not more. I fell in love with this city back in the 70s when I came here to go to school at what was then SMVTI and is now SMCC, and I've never looked back and I've never left. I'm running for the District 1 seat because I was lucky enough to have a daughter who bought a condo at Breakwater, knowing that I've always wanted to retire on the South Portland waterfront, looking at that view over there. And she did that and had a rough, rough sell with me. I love my house, I miss my house, I miss my solar panels, I miss my car charger, but it was a good move for me to make. And I lived my first 30 years in South Portland in District 1, and while I loved District 4 and I love the people in District 4 and they've been good to me, I am so happy to be back home in District 1. And that's why I want to run and represent the people and the businesses here. Not everyone in my situation is as lucky as I was. They would like to downsize, they're older, their house is too big for them now, it's gotten too expensive, but they don't have any place to go in South Portland, in the city that they love, either that they can afford or that they can find. And they want to live in the style to which they've worked their lives to have, but they can't find it in South Portland, so I'm very, very fortunate, so thank you, April. I still have a lot of contributions I think that I can make to this city, and I think that we have so many things to be grateful for in South Portland. Our four biggest assets are 12 and 1/2 square miles, our residents, our businesses, and our employees. And we have some of the best employees, but we've lost some of the best employees because they didn't feel appreciated. And we've lost some of our businesses as well, and many of our businesses feel the same way. That's why I came back to the city council two years ago. I could have finished my term in District 4, the charter allows me to do that, but I didn't think that that was fair to the people in District 4. I thought they needed someone who lived there every day, who knows the district, and that's why I stepped down and decided to run for the District 1 seat. I've worked in five municipalities and I've worked in almost every department in municipal government. I've worked in the largest municipality in the state to some of the smallest ones. I've been a municipal clerk, and I've been a town manager, and I wore multiple hats. I know how good government runs. If you want a counselor who can temper passion and compassion with common sense and the reality that the taxpayers' wallets are not bottomless, then please vote for me on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. We will move on to Mr. Williams.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me? Okay, I'm just connected to the headphone on the mic, so I just want to be clear. So my name is Brendan Williams, and I'm currently running for city council because I believe we need a new generation of voices and people on the council. I'm currently the only millennial running in this election, and millennials are the largest generational group in the country. I have a, I have the life experience as a venture, which I am now, a restaurant industry worker. I work at scale, totally recommend it. Someone with a disability, and I have been involved in civil politics since I was seven years old, not this city. But when I was young, I was raised by my mom, who was a single mother. She could not find a place to live, when she was in law school, not working much. And this was out in California. And she, I remember the first city meeting was when she went to a meeting regarding a zoning chain to build low-income housing. And she figured if they build this housing, I got a chance, and that was my first footstreak, trying to explain to me why it's important to a seven-year-old. This isn't like y'all today, why it's important to speak up at these meetings, because I do believe that the people that are sitting at the table are the people that will be affected by the policies. And I think if you're affected by the policies, you should be in the guidance post of making those decisions as well. I love South Portland. When I moved from California-Bahar Harbor back and forth, I decided to settle on Portland. I was staying in Portland, and then I didn't even think about South Portland till I got an audition to do a play. So I came over to South Portland for the first time to audition for the play. I got the play, I got the part, I did the play, it went well. We have a great theater community, and then I decided to stay here ever since, for the past many years. Living out by Broadway Garden, Elm Street, and now Summit Terrace, out in the District 1 area. And I love the food, the food business we have here. I love the people, I love the sense of community. South Portland has so much, I only have 90 seconds, that I don't think Portland has, and many major cities have. I can do something in the town, and everyone knows about it. I'm sure everyone will know what kind of ice cream I get after the event, and I love that. It's kind of like the Bahar Harbor feel of what I grew up with in my teenage years. So I hope I have your vote on November 7th, and I look forward to answering all the questions this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Ms. Coleman, we will move on to you.
Good evening, and thank you for doing this. And I can't read, is my name spelled R-A-C-H-A-E-L here? Good, it wasn't up there.
That is my mistake, and I apologize.
That's quite all right. And it's, it's, there's a long story why that's important. You need, no. And I became aware of Portland in this area. I came to an alumni meeting at Mercy Hospital, and when I saw the city lights at night, there was absolutely no other choice than coming to nursing school at Mercy. So that's 1967, and I willed beach and reds ice cream. That wasn't bicycles to go, plus we'd had tickets to go to the plays, it was, yeah. So I really, and when my life changed in 1993, I came back. And because this felt like a safe place, and I needed, and across the street were two men that my father actually went to high school with. And that, that made him feel that I was actually in a safe place, and there are sidewalks. And I, I've been a, I started working here in 93, but I became a homeowner in 1996, within walking distance of my work, because I had more than two decades, that was once South Portland Nursing Home, now Pinnacle. And I had, was the assistant director of nursing, so I had a job that actually frequently went from dark to dark. I knew I had to be there before quarter to seven, but I had no idea when I would go home. It's when I got relief. And I became really excited about city council because the main focus is health and safety. We create ordinances that look after the people, and that is my entire life of service, is health and safety. And I have become increasingly anxious because of the effects of global warming. And I, instead of just watching it from the outside, I thought I would get inside and start bailing with everybody else who's working hard, because we as a city have, well, we have looming changes, and it's not in the future, it's here. If this summer didn't show to people that we have global warming with increased heat this summer. And, I have 30 seconds, and I want you to know it's a collaborative practice, I'm a team player. It's about you, not about me, and I'd like for you to give me an opportunity to be an advocate for all of you, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman, and I apologize for getting your name spelled wrong in the first line.
That was the chance, just three minutes.
Finishing up with Mr. McDonald.
Thank you so much for everybody for doing this, and also thank you to the other candidates for running, because this is a pretty big deal. My name is Jeff McDonald. I thought I'd start out this evening with some information that you likely did not know, and has nothing really to do with me. Has anybody noticed how many acorns have been falling this year?
Yes.
So everybody's seen that, right?
Yes.
So these acorns, I had to look it up, because I was like, is it nuts? Or is it, are we being bombarded by acorns? I mean, is this a revenge of the squirrels? What's going on here? So I looked it up, and every two to five years, the oaks will drop an excessive amount of acorns to make up for the years that they're eaten by squirrels, chipmunks, deer, and birds, et cetera, to drop enough acorns that they know that their species will propagate, because they won't all get eaten. How about that? That's an interesting tidbit of information. I posted it on the South Portland Friends and Neighbors, and I found out that there is a group called the Saco River Wildlife Center that would love to have the extra acorns, because they go ahead and rescue lots of different, you know, wild animals. So if you have extra ones, take them to the Saco River Wildlife Center, and they'll be able to take them. Now on to why I'm running for the city of South Portland. What you, what you just saw was a tidbit of the fact that I love not knowing things. And when I not know something, it gives me a chance to learn something new. And I have a very curious nature, and I'm on the planning board and on the Comprehensive Plan Commission. One of the things I loved about being on the planning board and the Comprehensive Plan Commission, because it gave me a chance, an opportunity to learn things that I might not have had any opportunity to learn otherwise. And I get to hear from a lot of different people, a lot of different positions, that I wouldn't have gotten to hear otherwise, and I actively listen to them. And some of those people are in the crowds tonight. They know, they will actually hopefully stand up and say, you know, he did listen to us. He may not agree, but he at least listened to us. And I don't make a decision based upon my own personal, personal points of view, because I have the ability to change my mind. And I think that's a big thing for someone that's want to sit in front of you to say, if you could give me the reason why I am wrong, I'm willing to listen to that, and I'm willing to concede perhaps maybe my position was incorrect. And let's go ahead and take a look at this a little bit further. And to give you an example of one of those, I was originally against the idea of the city getting involved in the Airbnb's until I took a walk around the neighborhoods that were greatly affected, in which case I said, you know what? This isn't what a city or this town wanted to look like when they moved here. And I said, you know what? My position was wrong on this thing, and I support these people, and I support their initiatives. I've served in the planning board, the Comprehensive Plan Commission, and now I need to go ahead and close it up for my three minutes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Thank you all. We will now each, you each have 90 seconds to respond to the following 13 questions. Are you ready to begin? I guess we had one more that snuck in, I apologize.
So 13 questions all at once?
Yep, yeah, all of it, no, we're going to rule to you.
That's exactly what I thought.
I apologize, yes, no, there are a total of 13 questions. We'll be tackling them, however, one at a time and one person at a time. Is everybody still able to hear okay? Brendan, are you?
Oh, you're looking at me?
I'm curious.
Yeah, I can hear fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll let you know if I do need a repeat, though, but I'm fine for now.
Great, and everybody in the audience is still doing okay? Fantastic. All right. Our first, come on, there we go. Our first question is on the topic of the candidates themselves and learning more about them. And we will begin with Mr. Williams. Tell us about yourself. What experiences in your life have shaped you and influenced how you see the world?
Okay, I'll start with resume-wise about my experience serving the city, and then I'll go into the second part of the question there. So I'm currently on, I was on two city committees. I'm formerly, I'm a former member of the Human Rights Commission for the city, and currently still on the Civil Service Committee for the city as well. And I am on the statewide council for independent living. I'm a member of that committee that deals with disability rights issues throughout the state. So what experiences, well, my experience of being hearing impaired definitely is up there on the list. Probably that virtually shaped my life and disability rights. I think a lot of people with disabilities face a lot of barriers that other people don't realize. And as I was saying, me being raised by a single mother, the stuff I went through in high school with being hearing impaired, among other stuff. Also, oh, that's right, we're not three minutes, it's 90 seconds. I saw the sign. But I am progressive. My life experience and the people who raised me raised me to be progressive. And I think being progressive means caring about the people around you, whether you agree or don't agree with them, and making sure that we all have an equal opportunity in the things we need and love.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Ms. Coleman, tell us about yourself. What experiences in your life have shaped you and influenced how you see the world?
Well, it's, I have a very large, from a very large family. I'm 11th generation, on this continent only, the second in America. I'm Atlantic maritime Acadian, French Catholic Acadian. And being, I actually spoke French before I spoke English, but that was stopped because my mother told me later she thought that I would have an accent which would be a social liability. My parents, my family experienced prejudice. And, but also, it's the service. I mean, it was absolutely going to a Catholic school. It's never been about me, it's about the group. And I found out when I was getting my bachelor's degree that the smallest unit in, didn't know this, in Catholic is the family, not the individual. And nursing was something my mother always wanted to do. I haven't been involved in politics, but nursing is political. And so need to know that I come from a place where it's collaborative. It's not about me, it's about the needs of the other. And I'm, also, I, for service, I was a Girl Scout leader. I can herd cats, that was my other life.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Mr. McDonald, tell us about yourself. What experiences in your life have shaped you and influenced how you see the world?
Well, I'm glad that this is the second question, because it allows me to finish the part of the first question that I got the red card on. So I, I started out in Caribou, Maine, which is way the heck up there. And I moved from there to Panama, Central America, which is quite a change, as anybody might be able to tell, just from the geography and the temperature-wise and the language barriers and everything else that go along with it, and the culture. From there, I've moved around a lot. I've always considered Maine to be my ultimate home. I joined the military, and I served eight years in the Army and the Army Reserves while I was in college, and my reserve time was while I was in college. And that was when I was down in Texas. Then I met my now-wife up in Minneapolis, Minnesota, and she saw me across the way from a, you know, crowded bar, and she's very nearsighted, which explains how she chose me. And during my time in the corporate world, I've done a lot of work with a lot of different groups, including the Federal Emergency Management Agency. I have managed, led teams up to 1,000 people for large-scale disasters. And now I work in a small business, and I just decided to get out of the corporate world, and now I have downsized. So these are the things that influenced me, and my reasons for being here are about basically trying to do the best I can to service our city now.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Ms. Cohen.
Thank you.
Tell us about yourself. What experiences in your life have shaped you and influenced how you see the world?
Thank you. I grew up the youngest of five children to a single mother in Portland, and there was alcoholism in my home and mental health issues in my home. My brother died at the age of 56 in Portland, and he was homeless. And that gave me a perspective, talking to him the last few months before he passed, about the homeless population among us. I learned a lot, things that I never would have thought, and it got rid of some stereotypes in my head that I had as well. I ended up a single parent myself. I grew up kind of not feeling like I had any control, and I like to be in control now. And it made me a tougher person, I think, and I think I raised a strong daughter. I worked hard. Sometimes I worked three jobs at a time to make sure that we had the things that we needed. My mom did the same thing, so I guess I learned from the best. But I think that having been very, very poor in my life and also having been in a situation where I was making pretty good money, it's put me in a place where I can relate to a lot of different groups. And I think the mental health issues in my family also gave me a perspective that I wouldn't have otherwise had. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Our second question is on the topic of housing. Candidates will be, we will be beginning with Ms. Coleman on this round. Please discuss your perspective on housing in our city.
There is just not enough, inadequate amount of what I call workforce housing, and that is for the lower-wage worker. I feel, because I worked in long-term care for 35 years, and it's not the best paying. Childcare pays less, and I just, these people had, these women had to commute from far away during really bad weather, and sometimes have to be asked to stay over because there's no relief. And what do they do with childcare? And they live 20, 30, 40 minutes away, one way. And that happened to me briefly, because I lost my initial. That's why I bought a house right where I could walk during the snowstorm. It was safer, it definitely was safer. And there is right now, because of the changes in the median income, affordable housing. I think this is a, it's a national problem, it's not just ours. And so we need to have some grant writers to help us, so that we, and there is such a thing as, I will stop, non-market housing, which the government and also municipalities, it's not for profit, it is for people.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald, will you please discuss your perspective on housing in our city?
The single, well, there's lots of issues, and there's more than one thing can be true at the same time. And we have to acknowledge that simple fact. So there's no silver bullet, if you will, to fixing this problem. We can't prevent somebody from selling their home, okay? So unless we're going to go ahead and say, all right, you can't sell your house, and if someone else is willing to come on and pay them an exorbitant amount of money for them to sell their home, they have the right to sell it, and therefore the price keeps going up, going up, going up. You saw this happen during the pandemic, where a house that would normally go for, say, $200,000 is now going for $600,000. And this is happening across our town left and right. Now, this is a two-sided problem. Part of it is not really a problem, it just shows how great of a city we live in, because so many people are willing to spend so much money to get here. Now, the challenge that we're having is, we have so much red tape within our own government into the building up, building upward into multifamily, multi-unit homes, that we seem to have a challenge in the redevelopment and development of land that we have currently into multi-unit homes, which will save in carbon house gases and reduce the overall prices. So until we're able to do that, which is a political willpower to do so, and I would bring that willpower to the city and saying, look, it's going to be hard decisions we're going to have to make. But I'm the type of person that's willing to make those hard decisions for the greater good.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Ms. Cohen, please discuss your perspective on housing in our city.
Thank you. The city council received a report back in the fall of 2021. It was a big housing assessment, study that had been done on the situation in Cumberland County and Maine, but specific to our city. And the surprise for many of us was that it's the middle that is lacking in housing. There are lots of affordable housing projects. There are lots of affordable housing projects being built in South Portland. There are lots of opportunities for that and lots of funding for it. There are some high-end units that have been built in the city, but there's not much happening in the middle. And so that middle group is being left out of housing in this city. I think one of the problems is, you know, it's a cycle. When people can sell their homes, young people can come in and buy them, which was the case with my home, and that starts to free things up. When people leave apartments, they leave them for someone else. If they can move up to the next level, then that leaves that for someone else that's more affordable. But that cycle is not happening in South Portland because no one wants to sell because they can't go anywhere and they can't afford what they'd have to pay if they did. So it's, it's an issue that I think we're gonna be dealing with for quite a while to come. But it's not just one problem that has, or one thing that has caused this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Mr. Williams, please discuss your perspective on housing in the city.
Well, I can sum it up in a sentence. Basically, my thing is when we lack workforce housing, we lack good workers in our school system, our police department, our fire department, and many other people that serve the city well. And I know it doesn't take maybe two seconds to be on a Facebook page and just see people saying, hey, I got the job, I can't find a place to live. And when they don't find, when they don't find a housing, they can't take that job. Being on the civil service, I've had cops and firefighters say they live two hours, uh, two hours away, back and forth, because they really wanna work in the city, but there's just not enough housing. It is a failure of policies over many decades and not, and as you said, not a silver bullet will fix it. We need out-of-the-box solutions at this point. One being, many towns have done workforce housing, many industries and businesses have put their own workers up in workforce housing, provided their own housing for their workers. And ADU, I support that, but we're gonna make this not red tape because a lot of senior citizens are wanting to use ADU to supplement an income, but there's just maybe too much of a barrier. And that could be a house that one of my friends could live in. So, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Bring us to question four, which is on the topic of, sorry, question three on the topic of goals as well. We'll begin with Mr. McDonald. Every year, the council sets goals. What are your priority goals and why?
My priority goals are fairly simple, okay? We have gotten away from the basics, and I'm looking more towards the basics. I wanna go ahead and fund the schools and improve them, building on our infrastructure, take a look at increasing our tax base, and then keeping the peace. And those four things, in my mind, are the single largest goals that I would like to achieve. And anything beyond these are, would be, I would call nice to have. Because in, if you, we can do the four basics. And the four basics are extrapolation of different things. So say if you wanna say you wanna improve the schools, wanna make sure the schools are funded, wanna make sure that our students are getting the best that we can give them. The last I checked, I think we were around number 17 in the state. I believe that's the number, but I could be, I could be off on that one. For quality of education, infrastructure, we have aging infrastructure that we need to keep improving upon. Keeping the peace, we need to make sure that our police and fire department are well-funded and well-trained. And I'm about ready for the red card, so we'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Ms. Cohen, we will come back to you at this point. Every year, the council sets goals. What are your priority goals and why?
Thank you. Well, at the risk of sounding like Mr. McDonald, I have always been a basics person. I've always believed that a community's first responsibilities are to get these things right for its residents. Good sidewalks, good schools, good police and fire department, good public works. Those are the basic things that make a community livable. And then you've got good parks and opportunities for recreation. Those are the things that are important to me. They always have been. Coming up, I think we've got some major decisions to make about some of the buildings that our employees are working in. When I first came on the council back in 2012, my first priority was to get us out of the old public works facility up on O'Neill Street because it was dangerous for the employees. And I want to make sure that our employees are working in safe environments, whether it's our schools or our public works, police or fire departments, or this building here, City Hall.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Mr. Williams, every year, the council sets goals. What are your priority goals and why?
So my top priority is more workforce housing and more affordable housing, so that's up there. Second, the environment, making sure we're living in a clean and environmental-friendly area. We're protecting our parks, natural resources, and we are not like, and we're making it, battling climate change at the same time of doing that. Because climate change does hurt the environment. Also, I'd like to focus on fire and police and making sure they're getting what they need. A lot of them, the ones I've met have explained lack of mental health services. And I think we need to improve that and hear from them. I wanna do more with mental health in the police and fire department because that is a concern that's been coming up a lot lately. Nothing against, this is just a natural problem. And it's just something that I think needs to be addressed in the Met Council cycle.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Ms. Coleman, to you, every year, the council sets goals. What are your priority goals and why?
Okay. Mine is preparedness for climate change. And I think, you know, the state is developing one. I don't think we can wait for the state. We've been doing a lot of studies and looking at those. And we're doing our comprehensive plan, but what should be driving the base for our comprehensive plan should be a preparedness plan because we are facing looming, looming dangers as far as like sea level rise, storm surge, and soil liquefaction. This summer, even, all of Maine was suffering from soil liquefaction. I live next to Sawyer Street, that culvert in lots of our roads in Maine. And that's what happens with a lot of rain, short amount of time. It happened in New York last week. And so I want to see us have that as a base for our comprehensive plan, that if there, it's about health and it's about the safety and planning. Yes, we need infrastructure, but it needs to be based on what's going to be. I looked at the, yeah, the Crane Report, the Vulnerability Report, which is also with the, oh, Sustainability Department was also part of that. So thank you very much. I've been, see my seat.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Question four on the topic of infrastructure. We'll begin with Ms. Cohen. Deterioration of pipes, specifically the Sawyer Road culvert and pollution of Willard Beach raise questions and concerns about infrastructure. How would you address this problem?
Thank you. We have a wonderful department that handles these types of things. I'm so proud of South Portland in the fact that it has worked so diligently to separate the sewer and storm lines. So the things that happened in New York City within the last few days are less likely, not impossible to happen in South Portland. Do we still have issues with things coming out where they shouldn't at Willard Beach? Yes, we absolutely do. I had a long conversation with one of our former planners about that. A lot of it has to do with runoff from people's lawns, fertilizers, pesticides, all of that. I think we really need to do some education of the public, what the city is doing, because the city is doing a lot more than the average person realizes, to protect the beach and to protect the city. And I think that we also need to do a lot of education with the public, to get the public to come along and understand their part in polluting the areas around us.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Mr. Williams, deterioration of pipes, specifically Sawyer Road culvert and pollution at Willard Beach raise concerns about infrastructure. How would you address this problem?
Well, the pipe at Willard Beach needs to be fixed, like sooner than later. I know, I've heard from residents, it's been a problem for a long time. I know over the summer, June, we couldn't, my roommate and I couldn't use the sink or flush the, I don't know specifically, but there was something, a burst at the pipe. And then I remember I got the message from the city, and then I told my roommate, don't flush the toilet, and they're looking at me like, like, when did you get elected? But it does need to be fixed. It's a growing problem. We are, we had a very, I don't mean a bad summer in a bad way, but I mean, we have more rain than usual. And I think that does also affect the pipe as usual. And I would get into the possibility of a different kind of summer, meaning more rainfall in the summer. It's gonna make the pipe worse, it's gonna make the water quality worse. And I think, I'm not the expert at this at all, but I would definitely fight to make sure we have the right data, survey, everything to fix the pipe because it does affect a lot of people and it's a serious issue. It's not something we can just notify the town with a little flag on the rooftop and put it on Facebook. We actually have to look at state and federal funding to fix it.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Ms. Coleman, deterioration of pipes, specifically Sawyer Road culvert and pollution at Willard Beach raises concerns about infrastructure. How would you address this problem?
Well, I do know, because I asked the people that were there, we're not going to get a big culvert to go in Sawyer Street where it got washed out till next year. And it's because of the increased demand this year throughout Maine. And it's, yeah, and I mean, I found somebody this, today, whose driveway is a crushed rock rather than blacktop because mine needs to be redone. And that allows then the water to perk down. And so it helps address the problems with we're getting contaminated water, getting into our storm system and then going to Willard Beach, which is, I kinda weighed there to the ankles, but I won't swim, never have. And I really, yeah, when we had the, it wasn't the beach to beacon, but when we had the big, big event, that was right after we had had really contaminated water, the break in the pipe after, at CMCC. So, and this is all about climate change. It's really pressing our infrastructure. So every repairs have to be, again, where's the water gonna be, where's the runoff gonna be, and then make your plan after that. We have to take that into consideration first.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Mr. McDonald, deterioration of pipes, specifically Sawyer Road culvert and pollution at Willard Beach raises concerns about infrastructure. How would you address this problem?
I think the biggest getting to the root cause of this challenge is resources. And how are we spending the resources that we have? And what do we do to gain the resources necessary to actually address these challenges? So we do not have enough money to actually do this in one shot. So are we able to do more bonds? If we're gonna do more bonds, are we gonna have the credit rating necessary to make sure that this happens? Because we have lost some of our businesses within our community, which everybody has seen their individual tax bills go up because we fell down below a certain threshold of how much of our business taxes are being raised versus how much our individual home taxes are being raised. By bringing back the business taxes and trying to increase the amount of businesses back in there, we'll build up the cover as necessary to take on and tackle very large projects. Because these projects here that we're talking about, infrastructure, they are not gonna be cheap. And we have to recognize that now. Because if we're talking about climate change now, we're only in the very beginning of the next wave of these giant infrastructure plans that are gonna have to come up in order to protect our city going forward. So when we're looking at the budget, we gotta take a look at our budget right now. What's our budget gonna look like 15 years down the road? What's our budget gonna look like 50 years down the road? We gotta make sure we're planning for all of it.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. This brings us to question five, which is another about the candidates' topic. And we will begin with Mr. Williams. When you were thinking about the office that you're running for, is there anything that gives you pause?
Usually, I gotta make sure I heard what the person said. That gives me a pause right off the bat. Did they ask me the right question? No, yes and no. In terms of people saying, oh, do you wanna run for council? Or I'm glad you're running for council, I'm excited to do it. Win or lose, I love it. Met great people. That's one of the fun part about it, is meeting people, getting ideas, doing these events, going to other event parties, that's the fun part. The only concern that's in the back of my mind is the phone calls or the comment that came in. If you don't know, you would, but there were, they call them Zoom bombers or whatever. It's the hatefulness that is coming. So I'm not totally nervous about it. It's just, there's just a group out there that's just out against city government. And that's what, and I haven't received anything, I haven't received phone call, email, but it's just something in the back of my mind. Am I gonna say something if elected or vote something that's just gonna cause some hateful messages? That's literally the only thing now. But everything else would just make me happy to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Ms. Coleman, to you next. When you were thinking about the office that you're running for, is there anything that gives you pause?
Oh, just that I have to kind of like, and catch up. I've been reading a lot of like, like the Crane Report and the Sewer Report and the Traffic Report so that I can get up to speed. Because I like, healthcare, I can talk and I definitely know that and the politics of healthcare and still follow that because I'm interested. And so, but it's exciting. I've been having, and I got a laptop because I can read better now. It's getting really difficult on the phone. And, and I have, I have Wi-Fi. So I've been spending time in the library before because I am very frugal. And yes, so that's, you don't have to, it's like, because you don't know what you don't know because it's really new, but I'm excited about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Mr. McDonald, when you're thinking about the office that you're running for, is there anything that gives you pause?
Yes, there is things that gives, that give me pause. When I was asked on day one on the planning board, what are we trying to get accomplished? And there were so many different things that we have ahead of us. And the question, and as I alluded to it earlier, do we have the political willpower to get it done? And this gives me a lot of pause because the challenges that are coming up between now and the next 15 to 20 years, the actions that we're gonna be making on this next group is going to be affecting not just the generation of the people that are sitting in this room, but they're gonna be affecting the generation that comes behind us. And I had one of my daughter's friends, my daughter is a freshman in college, and one of her friends who plays on the tennis team with her, I saw her at Starbucks, and she said, why are you running anyway? And I said, believe it or not, I'm running for you. And I wanna make sure that when we leave South Portland, we leave it a better place for the next generation to come up behind us. Again, I'm getting the yellow card. Loquaciousness is a challenge that I have. So I, that is a pause, but I do feel hopeful that we can pull together as a, as a city and try to create a better future for the next generation coming up behind us.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Ms. Cohen, when you're thinking about the office that you're running for, is there anything that gives you pause?
Thank you. Yes, there is. I have loved being a city councillor. I love being able to help people. I love helping them solve their problems. And as a councillor, you get a lot of calls and a lot of emails from constituents who just have the strange problem that no one seems to be listening to them. And those are the ones that I love helping. But yes, as Mr. Williams has said, I'm Jewish. And we took phone calls a couple weeks ago from people during our Zoom meeting that were anti-Semitic, they were anti-black. And that's frightening. And it's not anything as bad as what Portland's been going through, but it does make you stop and think. It makes you stop and think when you have to have the police chief and the deputy police chief sitting in council chambers during a council meeting, or having a cruiser outside the building when you leave because you don't know who's waiting out there. The only other thing that gives me pause are people who want to make things up about us because they don't understand us and they won't come to us and ask us the question. And that frustrates me. But other than that, I love being a city councillor and just hope to keep doing it.
Thank you. Question six will be about the Mahoney School. We'll begin with Ms. Coleman. The Mahoney School building is coming into the city's possession. This building, as well as other municipal buildings, is undergoing a facilities assessment. Pending the assessment results, what is your vision for the Mahoney property?
Well, I'm still upset that we sold the armory because we have a fire department that is in need of expansion for training, and it's not ours anymore. And so we need to, I'm really happy that we're gonna be keeping Mahoney. There's multiple uses for that. I would very much like to see that the stage and the gym are preserved and that it's used for, for different purposes. That one, we could make money on, we could lease that area, or we could charge, it could be, and there's, there's space out back for parking. There could be housing there. There could be community offices there because I understand that we are, we There could be community offices there because I understand that we are, we are in need for, for people to meet. I also am aware that we have other buildings in the city where the offices are going underutilized and could be used for meetings also. So we have a lot of resources here. I would like us to, to think, to think further ahead 50 years and what I need and project what our needs are so we use what we have here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Mr. McDonald, the Mahoney School building is coming into the city's possession. This building, as well as other municipal buildings, is undergoing a facilities assessment. Pending the assessment results, what is your vision for the Mahoney property?
Well, I guess the good thing is for everybody in this room is she and I agree on this one almost lockstep. I am glad we're keeping Mahoney. I think that this is a great opportunity to build collaborative unity between our different disparate portions of city government. We have our tax assessor's office across the street from the building that we are in right now. We have the planning division up the street on Sawyer. I'm sorry, not Sawyer, yeah, it's on Sawyer Street. And we could put them all into one location. We have a gym with a recession in the gym, which places an ideal spot for the IT department to be located due to the security that that would allow us. We have a great stage there and that would allow for wonderful opportunities for our city council meetings to be held in. There's also an opportunity for us to relocate portions of our library in there. And there's also opportunities for us to rent out and lease for professional office spaces, including different things like accounting, legal practices, marketing, IT. And these are all things that, having them all in one building, I think would improve the overall services that the city can deliver to our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Ms. Cohen, the Mahoney School building is coming into the city's possession. This building, as well as other municipal buildings, is undergoing a facilities assessment. Pending the assessment results, what is your vision for the Mahoney property?
Thank you. Well, we just recently, within the last few weeks, took possession of Mahoney. There has been no decision made yet whether we're keeping it or whether we will put it up for sale. But I have seen several, several assessments from the committee that's working on this, combining different municipal buildings into Mahoney and some, some that make my head spin that I hadn't even thought about. But our library is old and, and it needs help. Our police department, the building is failing. We just have a lot of needs. This building has been failing for years. I shudder to think about the mold issues that are in some of our buildings that we just don't even know about at this point. My vision for Mahoney is that, one, the building stays up there, erect. Never, ever would I want to see that building torn down. If we were to keep it, I think that it does make sense to combine as many municipal buildings there as we possibly can. I would love to see some of those athletic facilities there used for the employees so that they can work out during their lunch breaks. We have showers and lockers there already, so that's already built in. We wouldn't have to go to the community center when we had a big turnout for council question and we could use that building for so many different things.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, the Mahoney School building is coming into the city's possession. This building, as well as other municipal buildings, is undergoing a facilities assessment. Pending the assessment results, what is your vision for the Mahoney property?
Well, the building's old, but I don't want to see it torn down either. The building is like 1923 or 1924. I'm think, supposed to be looking this way. My fault. So it is an old building, but I don't want to see it torn down. It's a historic building and has a lot of pride in the city. I would like to see a city hall, if that's possible, along with the other facilities put together. That doesn't even cover half of it, obviously. The other half, there are two ways to go about it. Considering the South Portland Housing Authority could have a part of it, that's an option. Commercial offices and, and businesses that would pay rent to the city and attract revenue is also an option. Also something, how, as a temporary shelter for asylum seekers, where the services they need would be in the same building is also another option. I would be supportive of all that. If city hall does move there, I would like to see this building being fixed up, become housing though, definitely. I think there could be a lot of good stuff out of this building, gotten it fixed. Also, I know the police station, they wanted a building. I don't want to just say let's put them in Mahoney because that's also an old building, but there's also possibilities there. So depending on the assessment, I would, there are many options, Ralph, to go with it, but I'd like to see a, I got the red photo.
Thank you all for paying attention to the time to this degree. I appreciate it. Question seven is on the topic of waste reduction and management. We'll begin with Mr. McDonald. Many ideas have been discussed regarding our increasing trash expenses. What do you think would help manage this?
That is such a broad question. And I'm not even sure that there is any singular answer that's going to work. We've started several programs, which I am 100% in for, inclusive of, you know, charging people to use bags if you go to the grocery store. I would like to see us use more opportunities where we can start buying things in bulk. And if we were allowed to buy things in bulk, because how much of waste is actually packaging? And this packaging has expenditures that come along with it. Now, we're all addicted to plastic right here in front of us. And if we could just reduce our addiction to plastic by allowing us to have more inside the grocery stores, and now how do we incentivize this? I am not even sure I have even thought far enough to do it. But we have a five cent additional thing to, for every bag you take. And even though I am terrible at reminding myself to bring those bags, I will torture myself and bring all my stuff into my car and then hand carry it in there and then make 10 things. My wife will tell me, she, why don't you just remember to bring the bag? I'm like, if it was that easy, I would have remembered to brought, to bring the bag. So my first thought is to go ahead and try to buy things in bulk. So that's my, that's where I am right now and I just got the red card.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Ms. Cohen, many ideas have been discussed regarding our increasing trash expenses. What do you think could help manage this?
South Portlanders tend to think that they are great recyclers, but we really aren't. And I serve on the EcoMaine Board of Directors, and so I see the numbers of the municipalities and I see where South Portland comes in, in that group. And we're not good. And I can remember driving across town and seeing so many green buckets out on trash day and not as many blue buckets. And I think that we really, really need to educate our residents of the financial impact to their wallet of not recycling. Because the more we're putting into those green bins and the less we're putting into the blue bins, the more it's costing us to pick up the trash and the tipping fees at EcoMaine just keep going up and up. And there's not really a whole lot we can do about that. The other thing, I do think that because of the pandemic, a lot of people have started ordering things online because it's easier. They got into the habit then and now we're seeing so many boxes and the wrapping paper that comes with the items that are in those boxes. And I don't know how we get back to where we were before because it's really convenient, but definitely we need to recycle more.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Mr. Williams, many ideas have been discussed regarding our increasing trash expenses. What do you think would help manage this?
I'm not the biggest expert on recycling, but the education needs to be, if I had to research the answers and stuff on this question, then clearly I needed an education as well. So I did the community, outreach into the community on it. But I think a lot of it is laziness. I don't mean that in a bad way, but people get in different bins. I eat out so much, I don't even have enough, that's good, but other people do have a lot at home. In terms of compost, I would like to see, I have a dream for a community garden that local businesses can opt into, coffee shops and restaurants to grow the vegetable and possibly use compost to rerun that garden. So there's something to do with the compost. In terms of increasing trash expenses, I support it overall, but I'm concerned about people on fixed income. You have people out in Red Bank, you have other, you have renters, you have, you have different groups of people. And while the intent might be good, I'm just concerned that we're just cutting into the paycheck too much. But I would focus just making sure we're spending the money to educate the public, community outreach and go from there. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Ms. Coleman, many ideas have been discussed regarding our increasing trash expenses. What do you think would help manage this?
Multi, multifactorial problem and I feel guilty. This is the second time I've had water in a bottle that's this year. I have been drinking out of a nice, you know, refill out of the faucet. Don't buy it. Definitely don't support this company. And I buy, do buy things in bulk. I go, you know, instead of going to the farmer's market in Portland, I've been going to the Jordan Farm in Cape Elizabeth. And I bring my own bags. I keep my bags right in the car at all times. And I try to look at things at a, I make choices that just aren't in a lot of packaging for that reason. And I generate a very small amount of trash each week and I eat just about everything so I don't have very many food scraps, but I do my own composting and just dig it in the backyard and then I use that. And there's a lot of people that are doing, actually I have a fair little lawn now so I don't have to and I let, let it grow deeper. So I'm done. I'm doing my part.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Question eight brings us back to about the candidates. We'll begin with Ms. Cohen. Is there a local policymaker or community figure whom you particularly admire? If so, then who and why?
Wow. Well, there are two political types that I really admire. One of them is George Mitchell. Not local, but one of my, my heroes. And another one for whom I have a great deal of respect is Cheryl Lehman in the City of Portland. Cheryl served on the Portland City Council for 21 years, I believe, maybe more. And she stuck to her beliefs. She listened to her people. She stayed in touch with her residents. She used to reach out to me when I was clerk and, and ask for addresses so she could send sympathy cards to people in her district. She was just an incredible city councillor and I just have always had so much respect for her.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, to you, is there a local policymaker or community figure whom you particularly admire? And if so, then who and why?
Statewide, I'm going to say my mother. That's for the legislative side. She probably washed in, so, but she's a legislator that represents Bar Harbor and she, you know, she threw me into the world, so more power to her. In terms of, so that covers the local. In terms of community, of community figure, I'm going to have to say literally the, the community. I know that sounds cliche, but A, one name did not come to me. The ones that came to me were like Harvey Milk, JFK, like people who were involved in politics nationally before I was even born. But I'm going to say the community because I think they're the ones that contribute to the campaign by giving me, telling me what's going on. I think they're important in vocal, like, city council meeting. There are people I've met in coffee shop, looking at one of the candidates who I see fall off for coffee and many others, the ones on committee. So almost everybody. I know it sounds cliche, but I think they're the ones that provide the best idea for the move in the city forward.
Thank you. Ms. Coleman, to you, is there a local policymaker or community figure whom you particularly admire? If so, then who and why?
Well, I want to start with the federal level. I, I am really pleased at the work that our senators and representatives are doing. And in Maine, Chenabello's comes to mind. I just think she is a really firecracker. And older ones, I'm from Rumford, so musky. And actually he spoke at my graduation from high school. And then we had Mitchell, who was at when I graduated, I have a master's degree and he was there. So I'm really proud to be from, oh, let's not forget Margaret J. Smith. Oh my goodness, who stood up, oh, for, and I, yes, of anybody in history from Maine, that's my girl. I'm going to start.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Is there a local policymaker or community figure whom you particularly admire? If so, then who and why?
Sure, we're digging out in the past here, so I'm going to go, I'm going to go with Joshua Chamberlain.
I do.
And seeing as how they set the precedence of going into the past, I'm going to go with Joshua Chamberlain. You know, he was in all those different movies later on in life, made by, played by many different people. But now that the joke is aside, although it's not really a joke, I do still really admire Joshua Chamberlain. She's sitting right over there, Ms. Cohen. And the reason why is I think that Ms. Cohen has always listened to people, tried to stay fair and tried to be educated in what it is that's being brought before the city council. And if I can emulate that and provide the same level of, hopefully have an understanding, the people that know me well enough know that I, that I do listen. And, and when I say listen, I mean actively listen. So if I can admire, if I can emulate Ms. Cohen, then I will think I'm doing okay. And I wanted to say, it's really terrible that you feel the way that you felt about the Zoom bombers. That's horrid. And we, our community has no room for any of that stuff.
Thank you. This brings us to question nine. We'll begin with Mr. Williams. The topic is yard south development. What are your views on the yard south project?
Well, from what I gathered the last couple, or the last year of yard south, I only have more questions than answers. So I wouldn't ever, I'm looking, probably looking this way. Sorry again. I have environmental concerns. I have oil tank concerns. I have, I'm more concerned about workforce housing. I go to Bud Light, like every day I walk. I don't want to see two 18 stories or multiple 18 story buildings there, luxury housing and all that. I like to keep it the way it is. Now, in terms of the land being used, I would like to see it more of the working waterfront. I think that's perfect. The Liberty ships were built there. So getting, once the environmental concerns and the other concerns addressed, and they need to be addressed, I would like to see it be a working waterfront and workforce housing for even the people that are working on the waterfront. Liberty ships have been built in other states and a lot of them use their land as a working waterfront and a marina. And so that's what I would like to see happen with the land.
Thank you. Ms. Coleman, to you, what are your views on the yard south project?
I have some grave concerns and it's because of health and safety. I was, when I heard about the project, I remember in 9/11, we, the nursing home had to revise our catastrophic evacuation plan because that's a terrorist target site. And, and there were others, how we exited out of here. But the tanks, the tanks and the fumes, we, between the piping station and the tanks, EPA allows something like, it's over 100 tons of volatile and there's benzene there. So to, and I went back to look at the history of the zone and residential's excluded. And it also says, any development has to take into account the impact on other districts. And what I do know is that's a working, you know, petroleum base, the 13 tanks and also the pipeline with lines that go through the 30 acres. And so to me, it's, it poses a public risk. And I'm very pleased that we now have a fire chief that has the history of understanding what global warming is about and believes in that. So I have some confidence that that's going to be taken into consideration, but I really don't think that that's an appropriate place for that project at all. And it's not a Mindy.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald, what are your views on the yard south project?
Unfortunately, I may have to accuse myself from answering this question because I am on the planning board. And being on the planning board and answering this question directly will put me as a conflict of interest. Because if I am not elected as into this city council, this is going to become before the planning board, in which case I will now be in a compromised position if I, depending what I say publicly.
Thank you for your response. Ms. Cohen, what are your views on the yard south project?
Thank you. I have a policy of not making decisions on projects that property owners are bringing forward before the city council. Until the project has been delivered to the city council, a presentation has been made and the public comment has been made. At that time, then I will. At that time, then I will express my views on the project after I have all the information. At this point, we don't have all the information. The only thing that I will say is that for everyone who's looking at the possibilities of what this project can be, or what this land can hold, I would suggest that you go to the Code of Ordinances and look up the shipyard district and what is allowed there. Because if the shipyard district remains there intact as it is today, you will be able to see more tanks, more gas companies, manufacturing facilities, and growing facilities for marijuana, and all kinds of other business uses on their property. So I highly suggest the public educate itself on what that zone currently allows before it comes before the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Question 10 is on the topic of immigration. We'll begin with Ms. Coleman. What are your thoughts on the impact of immigrants in our community?
It is pretty significant right now. And basically, I do know that we're getting a lot of federal funds, and a lot of the general public in Portland, excuse me, in South Portland, don't realize that and think, "Why aren't we doing something for our unhoused?" But a lot of the money, while the money that's being used for the immigrants is federal monies. I am so happy, again, that our government at the federal level is working toward decreasing from their ability to get a working work visa from the six months to much shorter, to see if they can streamline that process. Very pleased that New York is also working on this, and they have a bigger voice than we do. But there are a lot of people in government that recognize that we need to do something. They're going to keep coming. We have a lot of global immigrants, and some of the wars are because of famine. So this is not going to go away, and it is a global problem right now. It's not just ours. Thank you.
Mr. McDonald, to you, what are your thoughts on the impact of immigrants in our community?
I would echo a lot of what was just said. Mayor Bloomberg recently wrote a very long piece about the effects on cities of the increase of refugees, and how the federal government is almost like, say, "Well, now it's your problem." I would encourage everybody in this room, and everybody that's watching this, to call your state representative and tell them, "Look, if we're going to be taking refugees in this manner, they need to come with the ability to work." 8,000 miles to sit in a 12-by-12 room is not why they're here. They came here to help build their own lives, and we want them in our lives. We need them, because we have so many jobs that you could look at pretty much every business in our city, and you see hiring. You see it all over the place. And we have so many jobs we have unfilled right now. I could probably hire three of them for my businesses. If I had three qualified people, I'd hire them tomorrow. So please, call your congresspeople and say, "This is not something that we cities alone can do. We need a lot of help, but the biggest thing is let's get them in here. Let's get them to work, because that's why they came."
Thank you. Ms. Cohen, to you, what are your thoughts on the impact of immigrants in our community?
My father and his family immigrated to this country from Russia. And I like to think that they didn't come into the situation that our asylees and refugees and immigrants are coming into now. I would like to see us be able to change the work requirements for immigrants. They should be able to go to work almost immediately. They're bringing skills to this country that we badly need. We have a shortage of nurses, and doctors, and veterinarians, and plumbers, and electricians, you name it. We have a shortage of people to work in our workforce, and we need everyone to come here and fill those jobs. But they can't do it, because the federal government won't let them work and get a work visa for at least six months, if not longer. And it doesn't really matter whether federal dollars are paying for it or state dollars. It's still your dollars. And I think that it's hard for a lot of people to understand why they are working so hard, and their money is going to pay to house other people who are not part of their family. And that's not being mean, that's just being human. So we need to be able to get these people to work, because they want to be contributing members of their community, and we want them to be here.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, what are your thoughts on the impact of immigrants in our community?
Well, we desperately need them. And as the other three candidates just pointed out, the federal government is falling way behind. But I'm not running, because I can be an ear to the federal government. There's only so much we can do, whether it's contracting Shelley Pingu's office, or Susan Collins' office. When it comes to being on the city council for selected, I do think immigrants are gonna keep coming. I welcome them. I support that. I'll say that out loud right now. But there's never gonna be an end to it. It's not gonna be like, "Oh, we got 'em housed." But because of climate change, political war, a million different reasons why they come. I think we need a crisis management plan and a playbook that the city can refer to when they come from other places, because some of them are here for good, and we need them here to fill up the workforce. We also need them in the state. Fines up in the roost, you need them. And some of them are here temporarily to go to Canada. But I think we need to basically be prepared welcoming them, making them have a little permit and even temporary housing, making sure the education they need and everything, and partner with nonprofits to help us, be a helping hand in helping these people that we need.
Thank you. We do have time for one more question before we bring our unopposed candidates up for their introductory statements. We will have... Question 11 is on the governing process, beginning with Mr. McDonald. Please discuss your thoughts on managing unintended consequences of council decisions.
Wow. This is a fun one. Quite frankly, I'd really wanna start with, let's take a look at the council rules. And our council rules have us where we have, each person can come up and talk for two minutes. And then these people say, "Oh, well, thank you for your comment." We need to have more engagement, and where we have the ability to have more open dialogue with our people so that we can understand what exactly is really going on. Going through the Comprehensive Planning Commission, we had our first, I don't know, six or seven meetings, and it seemed like it was very boilerplate between us and the consulting firm that we were looking at. And a few of us were just like, "Okay, look, this seems like we are gonna really miss the boat, because this is the next 10 to 15, 20 years that we're looking at." So we wanna have more open dialogue between the people and the citizens to be able to say, "Okay, what do we want this to look like?" So the unintended consequences would hopefully be reduced by saying, "Okay, have we actually thought about all the... If we do this, what are the costs gonna be?" Because everything comes with a cost. We're gonna go and do this, it's gonna save us this, but what is the cost of that savings? If we do this, this is gonna build upon this, and build upon this, and build upon this, and pretty soon we have a 25% increase in pricing. So there you have it.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen, to you, would you please discuss your thoughts on managing unintended consequences of council decisions?
Thank you. When the council first started setting its goals two years ago, one of the things that I asked then-council was to please, whenever we're looking at adopting an ordinance, would we please do a list of pros and cons? And also take a look at other ordinances that are in existence and policies, and what this particular proposal will do to another policy that's in place. For instance, one of the goals of the city council is affordable housing. And yet, the council has passed sprinkler ordinances which require another $15,000 to $20,000 on the cost of a single-family house. There are certain soil requirements that builders have to meet that cost more money. There are so many inspections and the holdup on those things. The more the council passes, the more obstacles there are to some of the things it wants to succeed at. And we're not succeeding at a lot of things when we're creating new ordinances over and over and over again that are making existing problems even worse.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, please discuss your thoughts on managing unintended consequences of council decisions?
Well, what I would do is also weigh the pro and the con, but I would look at the bigger picture and figure out what benefits the community as a whole, what benefits most people, and what keeps the city moving forward. I know that every policy could have an unintended consequence, but some are small. Some are a couple people just little bit complaining about something. That's a little different than five years down the road, something, "We really didn't figure this out." So I would be, I would manage unintended consequence by listening to both sides. I do think sometimes people get so excited about an issue and passing something that sometime when somebody goes up there, it's like a brick wall. And I think for me, when I go to a council meeting, I think public comment is the most important part. Not because I get to talk, but that's one of it. But the other part is that's where residents are really explaining how this policy affects their life. I can't get, I can speak for myself. I can't speak for a senior citizen with a high property tax bill. I can't speak for an asylum seeker that's just staying at the motel. So I need to put those voices into my decision and make what I think is best for the entire community. And some people are gonna disagree. They just are. If I made everyone happy, that means I was just saying yes to every single thing, and really they were now conflicting with each other, and they're gonna go to that folder again.
Thank you. Ms. Coleman, please discuss your thoughts on managing unintended consequences of council decisions?
There always are. There always will be unintended consequences. That's part of, that's why politics moves so slowly, so that you can adjust as you go along. And I am aware of what happened with the ADUs and then the sprinklers. And we have created a lot of, we need to look at that again, because ADUs are a solution for older people and also for income. But also, I know some people who would like to move into the ADU and give their kids the house, the larger house. But the spring, and I understand about the sprinkler systems because of a lot of the toxic materials that we have now that are in construction rather than just old-fashioned wood. We've gotten rid of lead paint, which is a good thing, because this poses a risk if there should be a fire. But it has to be cost-effective. It has to be with the basis of health and safety, but within reason. And so going slow, getting, as everyone says, public comment, and experts' public comment, so that we can factor in things that we haven't seen. And that is a way to avoid unintended consequences. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite our two unopposed candidates, Mr. Riley and Ms. Tipton, to join us. Ms. Tipton, I believe we have your name over here. Mr. Riley to my left. Thank you as well, both of you, for volunteering to serve our community. And... And again, alphabetically, if I could, Mr. Riley, I'll invite you to begin for us. You have a three-minute opportunity to give us an introductory statement and tell us about yourself and your candidacy.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name is Steve Riley, and I'm 59 years old and have been married to my wife Lisa for 33-plus years. I have two children. Son Andrew is a senior at University of Maine, and my daughter is a junior at Mount Holyoke College. I moved to South Portland 28 years ago and raised, have raised my family here. I'm self-employed, and I run several small businesses from my home on Elkberry Drive. My wife has worked in the nutrition department at the South Portland School Department for over 11 years, and both my kids have graduated from South Portland High School. I serve on the South Portland Economic Development Committee. I'm a volunteer with Portland Wheelers, who provide free rides on specially-designed tricycles for people who cannot ride a bike. We provide rides at several local facilities, including Pinnacle South Portland and the Betsy Ross House. As you can see, I have strong ties to the local community and plan to spend many more years here. My decision to run for city council has been a work in progress for many years. My two children will be graduating, both be graduating college shortly, and they're both exploring opportunities in this area. They would love to stay here, but they're worried that they can't afford to live in South Portland. My wife and I have lived in our home for over 20 years and couldn't afford to buy it today. The fact that my kids can't afford to live here, and my wife and I couldn't buy our home today, makes me really sad. And I don't know what I can do to change that. Ms. Cohen addressed some of the ordinances earlier. And on the Economic Development Committee, one of the projects that I was asked to do was to look at all of the ordinances and how they impacted the cost of building in this city. And then I sat down with a couple local builders, and your head would spin if you knew how much the increase in the cost of building in South Portland from all these ordinances that are passed in the last five years. So I hope I can make a change. I hope I can make a difference. I'm an accountant by trade, and I think that I could really help and be an asset during the budget process and look at opportunities where we can reallocate resources from different areas. Mr. McDonald touched on it earlier, with infrastructure. Maybe we can reallocate some resources from other areas, put them towards infrastructure and not raise taxes for the community. So I'm gonna do the best that I can to help keep South Portland the great place that it is and really hope that my kids will settle here after they graduate from college. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Ms. Tipton, would you share your opening statement?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much to my impressive fellow candidates for being here tonight, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for bringing us together. I'm Elise Tipton, and even though I am unopposed to become your city council representative for District 5, I hope you'll still fill in that oval next to my name, because I would appreciate knowing that you're with me. I'll make brief remarks tonight to give you a little background about me and what I think is important for our city, and to remind voters that our council represents you. I've lived in beautiful South Portland for 12 of the 22 years I've lived in Maine, and between my husband and I, we have four adult children. Public service is something I value. I've served on the South Portland Board of Education, the school board, for nearly seven years, including serving as chair. I was also appointed to our city's Affordable Housing Committee earlier this year. My vision for the job of city councillor is influenced by my family's history. Like all Americans who aren't indigenous, I'm from a family of immigrants. Only one of my parents and one of my grandparents was born in the United States. My mix of family members came to escape the potato famine in Ireland, to move beyond rural poverty in Canada, and to get out of harm's way as French Jews during World War II. As asylum seekers in the land of American opportunity, they brought skills, and they found safety, and they gained prosperity. And my family's experience influences what I think is the most crucial responsibility of local government leaders, and that's to make decisions that enhance all of our residents' safety and health and actively build opportunities for our community to prosper. So here are some ways I think we can do that in South Portland, by working for affordable and workforce housing and financing. It was good to hear my fellow candidates acknowledge that safety and prosperity do start with stable living conditions. I think, and this is through my experience with the Affordable Housing Committee, that South Portland does have, as Linda mentioned, affordable housing projects underway, and we need to continue promoting accessory dwelling units, cluster development, and pocket neighborhoods, as well as create revenue for the city's new Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We also need to keep older residents, help them remain in their homes and involved in the community, and we should be very grateful that we had a great group of South Portlanders who put together the Age Friendly South Portland Action Plan, which shows us some ways to help those seniors. Our city's prosperity also depends on how we address a changing climate. Sea level rise is real, and I'm very encouraged to hear our candidates tonight acknowledge that we must prioritize planning for resilient and sustainable South Portland. So that's a little bit about me, and some of what I think is important for our city. But what I think is most important is that we hear from you, my fellow residents, and voters. And I just want to put one quick plug in for how you can now express what you think opportunities ahead are for our growing committee, and that's by making your voices heard during the comprehensive planning process that's going on now. To find out a little bit more about that, you can go to the website, southportland2040.com. So I'm really looking forward to serving you as a city councillor and collaborating for positive change, and I thank you for your vote.
Thank you all, and thank you all for being so conscientious. And thank you all for being so conscientious about time tonight. We are actually finishing pretty much right on time. This concludes the formal portion of our forum. And I would like to extend my deep thanks to the city of South Portland, to the League of Women Voters, to Jennifer Morris, who is the chair of the Local Forum Committee, to our timekeepers, the IT support staff here at City Hall, and to all of our candidates tonight and to each and every one of you, my fellow residents and fellow members of the democracy that keeps us going. Thank you so much, and thank you for your time. The candidates are welcome to remain at their stations and make themselves available to chat with community members as we are now completing our formal portion of the evening. Thank you all so very much, and have a lovely night.
Well, these are hot.